All right. Chairwoman Floyd Huggins, just so you're aware, we do have our intro that we will start very shortly. And due to the nature of the virtual board meeting format, we ask that everybody utilize the raise hand feature to be called upon. And just a few more moments, we will initiate the intro video.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening to all who are watching by way of live stream YouTube and Facebook. We welcome you to our February fifteenth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Pitt County Board of the Board of County Commissioners. So I will now call this meeting to order. We will have invocation and pledge after the call to order. Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Here.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Albright?
Here.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Here.
Commissioner Nonley?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Present.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Here.
Everyone is present.
Thank you. With our invocation by Commissioner Ward and pledge by Commissioner Chris Newt Nonley.
Okay. Most heavenly Father, if you will bless us tonight with your wisdom and guidance. We thank you for this day and we thank you for your help in slowing down the coronavirus. We hope that it keeps up and we do ask for your guidance tonight in the decisions that we make to help and guide Pitt County. Thank you, Army.
Commissioner Nonley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Go move, Madam Clerk.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the agenda is approved as printed. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now have public address to the board. Mr. Manager, do we have any votes signed?
Yes ma'am, we have one person signed up. They actually submitted a written statement for the board, if you'll allow me. This is, it just says a citizen in District Six that didn't identify themselves that dropped this by the county office building earlier today. It's entitled Concerned Citizen Pitt County District Six. It says in opposition to donation and relocation of Confederate monument to then venue. Then in parentheses, it says the Pitt Palace, Chicago area Highway forty-three South, Pitt County, North Carolina. It references the board's February first county commissioners meeting. Agenda item eleven, eleven, under our decision being the Pitt County Confederate Monument donation location. Then it's dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-one, addressed to Pitt County Board of Commissioners with the address of the county office building. And then it says, Dear County Commissioners. As I understand, this is the comment period for the citizens to make their comments in reference to agenda item eleven, number one, Pitt County Confederate Monument donation location. As I also understand, no final approval to granted to donate the Confederate Soldiers Monument to the North Carolina Division with the Sons of Confederate Veterans Incorporated. And no final approval has been granted to relocate Confederate Soldiers Monument to Highway forty-three South, Pitt County, North Carolina. As I understand, if approved, the twenty-seven foot Confederate Soldiers Monument relocation project will be paid for by Pitt County taxpayers. As it became resident District Six, I'm opposed to the relocation of the Confederate Monument, Confederate Soldier Monument to the Pitt Palace location on Highway forty-three South, Pitt County, North Carolina. This socially business location is within half a mile of the Chicago Elementary School. Being that he's got to print these parentheses, three thousand two hundred sixty-eight feet from schoolhouse, schoolhouse front doorsteps. He goes on to say, how can we justify removing a racially sensitive twenty-seven foot Confederate Soldiers Monument from the Pitt County Courthouse steps? And then reassembling it with taxpayers' money within the heart of Pitt County, near two public schools, not even a mile away. Also recognize them being highly visible, visibly near a major road, thoroughfare. These are Highway forty-three South and featured four lane highway. It's only been six months since June twenty-second, twenty twenty, at one AM on the cover of darkness. But the Confederate Soldiers Monument was removed from the courthouse steps. This statue is racially sensitive to many within the Chicago community also. Why not let the sleeping dogs lie and allow our community time to heal? Let our school teachers teach American history to our students within a peaceful, non contentious community environment. And without a twenty-seven foot Confederate statue overlooking the schoolhouse steps. Thank you again, anonymous unsigned. And that's the only person we have. We'll vote for your suspension.
Thank you. We will now move to presentations. Lee? And we have, Mr. Manager?
Yes ma'am, we have tonight for our presentation, presenting the CAFR, which is the acronym for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And I'll turn this over to Brian Barnett and I believe we have from Martin Sterns, Elsa Watts here, who is principal on this audit.
Good afternoon, good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Board of Commissioners. As the manager alluded to, we do have Elsa Watts on the Zoom tonight. Elsa is the Audit Manager from Martin and Sterns. She is the lead on the team that performs our annual required financial audit. Elsa is going to give a brief presentation of the results of the audit, but before that, just wanted to give you a quick breakdown. This is our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, better known as the CAFR. This was submitted to the local government commission, what we call the LGC on January twenty-ninth. Due to COVID, the audit was actually pushed, the the due date to submit to the LGC was pushed back to January thirty, thirty-first, so we were able to meet that requirement. Once approved by the LGC, we will submit the CAFR to the Government Finance Officers Association for its annual review, for its achievement, for excellence in financial reporting. This audit, we do believe, will meet those requirements. This will be the thirtieth year the county will receive that award. We do want to let the public know that the CAFR is available in the clerk's office for inspection and also on the county's website. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Watts and she is going to give a brief presentation of the twenty twenty financial audit.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm going to share my screen here. Okay. On behalf of Martin Sterns and Associates, I'd like to present Pitt County's two thousand twenty audited financial statements. Some audit highlights, the county received an unmodified opinion. This is a clean audit opinion. I would like to thank Brian Barnett, Chris McDaniel, the rest of the finance department, and as well as the other departments we worked with this year. Everyone has been wonderful to work with at Pitt County. Anytime we ask for information, we receive that timely. We really enjoy working with Pitt County and hope to continue that working relationship. And as Brian mentioned, we are currently waiting on approval from the LGC, but we hope to have that soon. Looking at your fund balance position for the general fund and keep in mind, these figures are as of June thirty, two thousand twenty. Total fund balance at June thirty, two thousand twenty was forty point nine million for the general fund. You had non-spendable items of one hundred and fourteen thousand. You had items restricted by state statute of seven point four million. This gives you an available fund balance calculation of thirty-three point three million. And the LGC uses this calculation to compare to other units. This is an increase in your available fund balance of four point four million. Your available fund balance as a percent of expenditures and transfers out for the general fund for two thousand twenty was twenty-one point forty-four percent. Then looking at your revenues and expenditures for the year, the past few years trends. Revenues for two thousand twenty were one hundred and fifty-four million, an increase of about four percent. And expenditures were one hundred and forty-seven point six million, an increase of about six percent. And I'll detail these further along in the presentation. The makeup of your major revenues for the general fund, you had property taxes that made up sixty-two percent. Restricted intergovernmental revenues made up fifteen percent. Other taxes and licenses made up fifteen percent and you had other revenues of eight percent. Property taxes were ninety-five point seven million. This is an increase of about seven percent due to your tax increase. Other taxes and licenses were just over twenty-three million and a decrease of about one percent. And restricted intergovernmental revenues, these are your federal and state grants, were twenty-three point eight million. This is a change of about less than one percent increase. These are primarily your federal and state grants. Major expenditure categories were public safety at twenty-five percent. Education at thirty-three percent. Human services, twenty-seven percent, and other expenditures for the general fund made up fifteen percent. Public safety expenditures were at thirty-six point eight million, an increase of about four percent. Human services were at thirty-nine, four million, an increase of about one percent. And education was at forty-eight million, an increase of about three percent there. And taking a look at your quick ratio for your solid waste fund, the quick ratio measures your short term liquidity with your most liquid assets. Your current assets were just over one million. You had current liabilities of eight hundred and eight thousand. This gives you a quick ratio of one point two nine and the LGC is normally concerned if that number is less than one. And then looking at your cash flow for solid waste, you had cash flow from operations of three hundred and seventy-two thousand. Less debt service related to that of one hundred and forty-four thousand. And your cash flow less debt service is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And again, the LGC is normally concerned if this is a negative amount. This does conclude my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? I can't see your hands, so, Mr. Manager, any hands? Now.
Seeing right now.
No, I don't see you in there. Okay.
Now, I've got the participant list up. I did not see any hands up at this time.
Okay. Well. We want, we want to thank Brian and Alicia for that report. And it's outstanding that we are, this is the thirtieth year that we will be considered for the certificate of achievement for excellent financial reporting. That is outstanding, I believe, for Pitt County. So, thank you. I believe we need a motion to accept.
Yes ma'am.
This report.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Ward?
I can't, I don't have my hand raised, so I apologize for just blurring out, but I would like to make a motion to accept this report of the audit.
Okay, Commissioner Nonley?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we accept the audit report. Are you, it's been moved in second that we accept it. Are you ready for the question, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the presentation of the Black History Month recognition. Scott, you want to start that off and then I'll come in?
Yes ma'am. So we have, to recognize Black History Month for the month of February of twenty twenty-one. We've got a recognition here and if the chairwoman would like, I can read this and then read the names and you make your comments as well. So on the summary of information, we've got the Pitt County government is proud to celebrate Black History Month by recognizing the efforts and achievements of Pitt County African-Americans who have served and currently serve on Pitt County Board of Commissioners. Their public service contributions in our community don't just, don't just benefit African-Americans in our county, but also serve our community as a whole as we work to provide social services, health services, funding for education and nine-one-one services, for example. Our community is best served and all have an opportunity to participate in our political and governing process. It is this diversity that makes us stronger and better able to work together on the challenges facing our community. We pay tribute to the following African-Americans for their service on the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. This will be a comprehensive list of all the African-American county commissioners, past and current. So first, we have DeeDee Garrett, who served from December nineteen ninety-eight through December nineteen ninety-two. He was the first African-American elected to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners within his party.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
No, I'm sorry, nineteen, yeah, nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-two. Then we had Farnie Moore, who was elected in December of nineteen eighty-eight, who served through nineteen ninety-eight. Then we have Jeff Savage, December of nineteen ninety-two, and there's actually a correction on the list here. He actually went off in December of nineteen ninety-eight. At that point, or actually our chairwoman and Floyd Huggins came on and we'll recognize her service here in just a moment. Then moving on, we had David Hammond, who served from December nineteen ninety-eight through April of two thousand seventeen. Randy Royal, who served from December of two thousand through December of two thousand four. Then our chairwoman and Floyd Huggins, who came on in December nineteen ninety-eight through December two thousand, then had a break in service and then in April of two thousand came back on the board to fill the seat of David Hammond and then was elected by those in her district to her current position. We then have Melvin McLawhorn from December of two thousand four to current. And our last recognition, Mary Perkins-Williams, from two thousand fourteen to current.
We, we want to, we want to recognize these African-Americans, especially the very first ones, DeeDee Garrett and Farnie Moore. We, we stand on their shoulders now as we represent on the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. I want to reiterate one of the statements in the, in the message that, that Scott read. And I think this really, it is a diversity that makes us stronger and better able to work together on the challenges facing our community. I think that is very important that, that we're able to do that and that we have that diversity. Thank you, Scott, for reading that. I don't think we need, need a motion or anything on that. It's just a recognition.
Correct.
So now we will go to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing up. And we have on the first item is a road change for Cheek Farms Road. Scott?
Yes ma'am, so if we can hear the staff presentation first and then open each public hearing after each of the, the three scheduled for, as you mentioned, Madam Chairwoman, we have a road name change public hearing on Cheek Farm Road. I believe either Eli Johnson or James Root is going to make a presentation on this.
Yes, I'll be doing that.
Okay, so we have to, we open it up for the public hearing first and then we have staff talk?
Well, we'll have the staff presentation to describe what's, what then do you feel well?
All right, I'm just, I turned it around.
Yeah.
Okay, can you guys see the presentation before you? They, okay.
Yes.
As I'm Eli Johnson with the Pitt County Planning Department, when I'm here to talk about the road name change for Cheek Farm Road, a portion of that. The North Carolina Department of Transportation through its contractor Barn Hill Construction completed the construction of the Southwest Bypass. Well, that bypass created a western and eastern segment of Cheek Farm Road. This is the map to show you the location, which is right in between One Oval and Aiden off of nine oh three. Due to that division on the road, it's been determined that we needed to, the western segment needed to be renamed to avoid confusion. Once it's renamed, then the addresses will change for the structures located along this portion. The property owners have already been notified and given an opportunity to submit a recommendation for the name of the road. There's five parcels with four unique property owners and one residential home that's affected by this change. And so our addressing ordinance, it requires that, for a road name change, that we just bring it to the board and have a public hearing and notify the property owners at an advertised public hearing. We've also sent the notifications to the fire and rescue departments for comments. We haven't received any comments for the fire and rescue and so at this time, we have, the road name has been submitted as Everett Farm Road by one of the property owners, two of them. And that's what we're recommending for approval. So after holding the recommendation, then we want to go ahead and recommend renaming that portion of Cheek Farm Road to Everett Farm Road.
Okay. So now we have the public hearing?
Yes ma'am.
The public hearing is now open.
So Madam Chairwoman, we have two people signed up for this road name change. The first one has a written statement. It's from Dwayne in Rose Jones, who resides at eight oh six Cheek Farm Road. They emailed us today and just said, we would like to be on record regarding the road name change at Cheek Farm Road. Please change the name of the Cheek Farm Road to Everett Farm Road. So that is your first one. We also have a second person who I believe is on this Zoom meeting, a Siren Wood. If Mr. Wood can be opened up to be allowed to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am for that change. I am for Everett Farm Road.
Okay.
All right, Madam Chair, I believe that's all we have signed up. So you have two people who are in favor of it. There's nobody else. Correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Okay. So we would, Commissioner White, I see your hand. Do you, well, do you have a question?
No ma'am, I just raised my hand a little prematurely to make a motion, so you could just call back on me after the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, yes, okay. Commissioner Perkins-Williams, do you have a question also?
Gee. I was going to just go into, close the public hearing and go into a discussion.
We'll go to
a motion that we got, close the public hearing for this, is that, is that what we do?
No.
Madam Chair, it looks like Mr. Wood would like to be recognized.
Mr. Wood?
Yes ma'am. I'd like to speak about the proposed subdivision on Cheek Farm Road. There is a proposal to develop that land about twenty-four acres into twelve tracts. And I wanted to ask the other commissioners if they received an email from me today. It would have come from Christie Searle and it was a Dropbox. Did, did, did anyone or anyone receive that?
Mr. Wood, at this time, we're, we're dealing with the name change and I believe we did receive your information. But at this time, we're dealing with the name change.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just as a point of matter, I guess the, if there is a subdivision that's being proposed on that, the planning board, Pitt County Planning Board would probably be handling that. I don't know if Eli Johnson, if you have any information on that, that you could refer him to on that.
Mr. Manager, this is James. Yes, we're dealing with that particular subdivision Wednesday night at the planning board meeting. So we have received Mr. Wood's information and that will be shared with the planning board that night and we welcome him to join us for our virtual meeting as well.
Now, point of clarification, I guess the decision is made with the planning board, it's vested to them to make the decision, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, that decision rests solely with the planning board.
We are just dealing with the name change tonight. Okay. The next item, Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, I think you need to vote.
We're going to, we're going to close the public hearing on the name change of the, I mean, of the Cheek Farm Road. We're closing the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept it.
Okay.
I'd like to second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we close, that we accept the name change for the Cheek Farm Road to Everett Road, I believe. Is that it? Okay. And move the second, Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we would like to open the public hearing for the glen, the next item. This, Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. We have a Glendon Forest Equity LLC rezoning request, and I believe James Rhodes is going to make this presentation.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Good to be with you tonight. We have two rezonings for your consideration. The first one is with Glendon Forest Equity. And you've probably heard that name before. They've been before, uh, for rezonings, uh, a couple of times before. So this particular one, I'll show you some of the details. It actually involves three separate parcels. Uh, they're all located at the intersection of two sixty-four East and Grandsome Bridge Road. And the request is, uh, rezone from rural residential to general commercial. Uh, just to orient you a bit, um, on screen, you'll see the map. And, uh, this is right on the eastern edge of our county. And this is the intersection of two sixty-four with North Grandsome Bridge Road. And zooming in just a bit, here's two sixty-four East. Beaufort County is just off to the east here. Grandsome Bridge Road. Um, the area here that looks like a roadway is actually an abandoned rail line or rail corridor. So the three tracks involved are between two sixty-four and the abandoned rail line there. Uh, just to give you an idea of some of the existing land uses there, predominantly residential. Uh, there are some scattered, a couple of churches shown in blue, also some commercial areas shown around there as well. This is a recent rezoning that you dealt with about a year ago, um, for someone that was interested in starting an auto repair shop. Uh, this entire area is in a commercial crossroads community, is designated by our land use plan. And these types of, um, crossroad communities typically have a mix of uses, including residential, of course, and commercial, and some public or institutional type uses. The tights, uh, typically, especially out in the county, we're looking at developing on private septic systems. And this area does not have sanitary sewer, so that would be the wastewater disposal process. Um, the category is designated at prominent crossroad locations throughout the county and where there's substantial enough, um, activity where people would need goods and services in that area. So again, back to the map, um, this is our zoning map. The area here is actually zoned, as I mentioned, rural residential, and they're seeking general commercial. And this is the site I mentioned earlier where, um, uh, auto repair shop was approved about a year ago. Off to the east or west a bit, you can see there are some industrial type uses and some small commercial areas. And the proposed use or the proposed zoning district is general commercial, and it's intended to accommodate a wide range of retail service and office, um, type uses. This project or this property is also located within the highway corridor overlay district. And we, that district, of course, um, is overlaid on both NC eleven, the Southwest Bypass, and US two sixty-four. So in those areas, the board decided a long time ago to put in extra provisions for screening and buffering just to make that separation from the highway. The planning staff has reviewed this request and believe it is consistent with the land use plan, as we've discussed, and also that it's reasonable in the, and in the public interest. Uh, the planning board reviewed it last month, January twentieth, at, uh, its monthly meeting, and also recommended approval of the request and to advise it is consistent with the land use plan. So two motions for your consideration tonight. First, adopt the, uh, consistency statement and note also that it's reasonable and in public, in the public's best interest. And then secondly, approve the actual request to rezon the property, which is about an acre and a half from, um, rural residential to general commercial. So with that, Madam Chair, we're ready to open the public hearing for this particular rezoning request.
Okay. Public hearing is now open. Do we have anybody speaking?
Madam Chairwoman, we have one person signed up who's actually, um, representing the petitioner. This is Brent Purdum with Triangle Site Design. I don't think he's gonna speak unless there's any questions, but I believe he is on the call. Um, if the board would like to ask him anything.
A hearing now, we will now close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, motion to approve both motion as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been moved in second that we, uh, accept as presented. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn? Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Then we will go to the third item, uh, and Mr. Manager. We will hear from staff and then we will open, uh, public hearing. I believe James is up again.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we'll go straight into this, uh, particular request for Ochoa Properties, uh, LLC. And this particular request is a conditional district, um, rezoning request. So unlike the one you just heard, this one would allow for additional conditions to be added. The other one was a straightforward rezoning from one district to another. So this particular request is from rural residential to general commercial conditional district to allow one particular type of use, and in this case, an automobile repair business. Uh, just to orient you a bit here as to where this property is located, it is, um, right on Worthington Road, just west of its intersection with NC forty-three, right where DH Conley High School is located. This is a zoom-in area, and again, uh, you can see here's the crossroad community, Hollywood Crossroads, at the intersection of forty-three with Worthington and Mills Roads. And it is just to the west of that particular intersection. You can see the ball fields and the school parking lot and all here at DH Conley High School, just to orient you. The site, uh, again, as far as some of the existing land use is predominantly residential, especially right along, these are, have been developed as roadfront residential lots probably forty to fifty years ago. Um, you can also see the school site along with the soccer complex. It's right on the backside of, uh, or the south side of DH Conley. And right up around Hollywood Wood Crossroads area, you'll see a number of commercial uses, a mini storage facility, a store. Um, also, um, heating and air conditioning or remodeling business here a little bit further to the south. So a number of use, um, non-residential uses there around the Hollywood Crossroads area. Um, as we've already mentioned, suburban residential, this is the designation here that we're, uh, our land use plan shows in this area of the county. And it's intended to, uh, include residential land uses, single family, as well as some limited multifamily and commercial type uses in that area. There are locational criteria, um, need to have frontage or access to either a major highway or secondary roads such as Worthington Road, um, located at a major intersection in proximity to similar uses. It shows some of those other non-residential uses in, um, close proximity. The land designated suburban residential is designated by the greater potential for development and a wider range of land uses. So just to give you an idea of what the current zoning map looks like, it does take into account a lot of activity existing and proposed a- around the Hollywood Crossroads area. So a large area through the commissioners dealt with this rezoning request on the southwest corner of NC forty-three in Worthington. Probably ten years ago, a more recent one in this area on the, um, northeast quadrant. And again, uh, another rezoning here for mini storage facilities. So what's being request on, requested for this site is commercial, um, but for only one particular use, and that being the auto repair business. So the general commercial district, as we talked about, uh, with the previous rezoning, uh, is to accommodate a wide range of different uses. But tonight's conditional district is only for one particular use, as I've mentioned, and that's the auto repair business. And with these conditional district rezonings, there's a site plan that's required. So I'll show you a few of the, um, different improvements and different changes that will be made as part of this request if it's approved. So again, this particular property, pretty much as shown and read, looks like more or less a panhandle type parcel that's being created with, uh, frontage out onto Worthington Road. And just to reorient you, the surveyor, for whatever reason, put the north arrow pointing down to the bottom. So we're flipped upside down and backwards here. So just now Worthington Road here, panhandle leading into the bulk of the lot. This is some existing structures. I will tell you that there had been an auto automobile repair shop on this site up until about three or four years ago. So there are some existing structures. Here's a new driveway leading into that site. There's an existing structure here that will be removed. There'll be a gate that would limit any access through, um, the residential property up front. There's also a proposed parking area. There is existing vegetation along the back property line there. So planning staff has reviewed this and believe that it is consistent with the land use plan um, and is reasonable and in the public interest for this particular, uh, request to be approved. The planning board likewise, uh, reviewed this at its January meeting and also unanimously recommended approval. And there are, again, opportunity with these types of uses or these requests to, uh, provide some additional conditions. Uh, but upfront, the first motion is very similar to the previous one that you just dealt with. Um, we're recommending adoption of a consistency statement uh, and also to show that it is in reasonable and in the public interest. The second motion, uh, is to approve the request and to rezon the property from rural residential to general commercial conditional district. And specifically for an auto repair business with several different conditions. And those were included in your package, and you probably have noticed that is, uh, attachment number eleven in your package. There are quite a number of these, and you can see that the, uh, landowner has already consented to these and has signed off on those particular conditions. So I'll run through those fairly quickly. Um, the first one is just to give some parameters as to this is an auto repair shop and not a salvage yard. So we put some parameters in there to make sure that it's operated only as an auto repair shop. There's also a need for a revised site plan. And a big, um, comment that we received at the planning board stage was about potential signage there. And as you've noticed, the owner has already consented to reducing the area that would have been allowed for signage. He's saying that, um, the, the signage that will be placed on site will be, will not exceed six foot by ten foot. Normally on general commercial sites, up to two hundred square foot could be used for signage. So this is reducing it down to sixty square feet. Also acknowledging that any lighting for that signage would be shielded so that the li- the light would not shine directly onto the surrounding properties. Other things, uh, the required parking spaces and access drives and so forth would need to be paved. Uh, soil erosion, sedimentation control plan would be required if more than an acre is, um, disturbed. There's still a determination that needs to be made as to whether this, um, soil, stormwater ordinance would need to, uh, apply to this particular area. And that will also be determined with the revised site plan. A driveway permit is required through DOT, and, um, Pitt County's Inspections Department uh, has to ensure that everything is operational before they begin operating the business there as well as the Environmental Health Division. So with that, Madam Chair, with those two motions along with the conditions, we're ready for your discussion, uh, or opening up of the public hearing, and I'll be glad for any further questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, James. Um, I declare the, uh, public hearing open at this time. Do we have any? Uh, Perkins-Williams, I see your hand.
Oh, I didn't, oh, I didn't mean to put it up, but I do have some questions. If I can put, if I can ask them right now, because I do have them. But I didn't know I had put it up. Um, thank you. Is, is it time for, for me to ask questions?
Well, we were, we were supposed to see.
It's a public first. I'm, I didn't mean to go right now. This is the public, my paper here.
All right. Uh, Mr. Manager, do we have anybody?
Yes, ma'am. Like in the last case, we have nobody signed up, but we do have Mike Baldwin with Baldwin Associates. He's here on, on behalf of petitioner, in case there are any questions that need to be directed to him. So we can take other questions from the board members if you like.
So what did you say about? The person signed up?
Oh, it's, it's, uh, Mike Baldwin, representing the petitioner with, with Baldwin Associates. He's only here in case there's any questions from board members.
All, all right. So we'll go directly now to the board members.
All right.
Okay.
Now, we gotta go with my hand.
And did you close your public hearing?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I never closed the public hearing.
Thanks.
Now, Perkins-Williams?
Oh, Lordy. Um, thank you, Madam Chair, Chairwoman. Um, my question, um, is, uh, this panhandle coming out, Mr. Rose? I have, there's an area that has a, uh, automobile repair shop near a road, and it's like a panhandle. Is there vegetation? And the problem comes when you get to the stop sign or get to the portion to enter. Is there vegetation, uh, or is there anything that would, uh, distort the view of a person driving up there? You know, that long little panhandle you were talking about? That, that was my concern about safety.
Um, Commissioner Perkins-Williams, there is no indication that vegetation would be planted right up to the roadway, and certainly, uh, you wouldn't want to obstruct the view of people either exiting or entering the property there. So at this point, the site plan does not indicate any vegetation will be installed.
What was, my concern is, uh, there's a place that come in a little point-like area where you, uh, hit two-two-two and, uh, billboard highway. And there is a auto repair shop right near there. And as always, you gotta peep around, the cars pop out and, and that sort of thing. That was my concern as it relates to, um, motor vehicle driving and drivers and, and possible, uh, uh, motor vehicle driving and drivers and possible hazardous.
No, with this, most of the operations, as you can tell, the existing buildings will be utilized, and that's toward the rear or to the bulk of the property in the rear there. So I doubt very seriously that they would try to limit access or block their access to the primary place where the automobile work will be performed.
Okay, well, okay, that was my concern. Is this existing automobile repair shop, is it being exceptional because it's been existing there for a long period of time?
No, there is, since it did close down, it was required that it come back before you for consideration. So this one, it was in place when zoning was established back in two thousand and three. It closed for a certain amount of time, so it then had to comply with the zoning ordinance and therefore this rezoning request.
I was just wondering about it. Because it looks just strange as residential and an auto repair shop right there, and then it goes away and it come back. And I'm very sensitive about hazard to driving and personal life. Thank you. But you said it won't happen, so that's good enough. I think you were going. I'm finished, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. I see no other hands. So we've closed it, so I believe we are ready for a motion.
So move on the motion and recommendation of the staff.
Okay. The motion. Yes, on both motions.
Yes.
Okay, spin move a second. That we will accept as the two motions, the rezoning and the consistency that staff presented. Madam Clerk?
Airwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McAlhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. You're welcome. We will now move to items for report, and the first one under that one is Public Health Director, Dr. Silverman.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Allow me to share my screen. And to the full side. All right. Want to just hit with one of the buzzwords we've been trying to coin or use. This is an amalgamation of some things that we've developed at the Health Department or I've developed at the Health Department, and then things from the state and things from Biden, we've kind of put it into one term that we call COVID smart. And COVID smart, I've used this at my press conferences, used this at other public appearances where I've spoken to community groups. When we talk about being COVID smart, we ask people to stay home if they're sick, to stay home if they know they've been exposed to someone with COVID nineteen, to practice the three Ws, to wear their masks, to wash or sanitize their hands frequently, to wait six feet or more from others. And Dr. Waltrum's been big on avoiding crowds and other large gatherings, so we've made that a part of our COVID smart line that we've tried to encourage our residents to practice. Want to move on and briefly discuss our Pitt County data. This is where we were when we last met on the first. Over the previous fourteen days, we'd had a little over fourteen hundred cases, and we're averaging about one hundred one cases per day. Our cases per thousand residents in the county was about seven point seven. Our percent positivity was nine point nine percent. Last week, when I presented to the Board of Health, we had improved somewhat. Still a little over fourteen hundred cases in fourteen days, so just over a hundred cases, almost a hundred and one cases. So not a big drop, but still a little bit of a drop. Our case rate per thousand was down a hair at seven point six. Our percent of positive had dropped to eight point four percent, and that was as of the ninth. Today, over the past fourteen days, we have accrued one thousand two hundred sixty-eight cases. That's an average of ninety point six or just under ninety-one cases per day, so but down about ten cases per day. Our active cases per thousand is down to six point nine, so just under seven. In happier times or in less COVID times, we were running about three cases to maybe three point four cases per thousand residents. So still about twice where we were in what we consider quieter times of the pandemic. Our total cases to date are sixteen thousand seven hundred thirty-six. That represents about nine percent of the Pitt County residents. Our estimated recover to date is fifteen thousand three hundred ninety-two, representing about ninety-two percent of our cases. We did accrue four deaths through the weekend, bringing our total deaths to date to seventy-six. Again, far better than I think we would have expected or predicted earlier on in the pandemic. And our case fatality rate was at zero point five today, point four-five in the unrounded. Want to back up for a second. Last week, we hit a new low in our case fatality rate of zero point four, extending the lower limit of our range for the pandemic to zero point four, and we're at zero point four-four in the unrounded. So up a hair with the additional deaths, but still at the lower end of where we've seen the case fatality rate across the county. And today, our percentage of tests returning positive was down to seven point seven, so very favorable numbers. We continue to see declines in our COVID nineteen cases, and the COVID nineteen curve appears to be at this point following the influenza curve. The one question that we have is, will we see a a spring wave in March and perhaps early April? In most years with influenza, we do. We're not sure if we will with COVID. The COVID does seem to follow human activity, and with the coming of Easter and Passover and other other religious holidays in the spring, it's likely we will see some mild surge in cases as we do with influenza. But time will tell. Over the weekend, we learned that a COVID variant has been detected in Pitt County. It is the South African variant of the coronavirus. Viden Health Lab, under the direction of Dr. Fallon, who's an ECU physician, is doing some sequencing. So this was identified in two individuals from Pitt County. There is a third case in that house. All of these folks are at the point now where we would consider them recovered, but they do have the sample from the third individual, and they will try to sequence that and see if that individual also had the South African variant. It's unclear if these are imported by or if the virus has a tendency to mutate to a known variant identified. In discussing this with Dr. Moore, the state epidemiologist today, he said that the the variants are multiple mutations that comprise these, so unlikely to arise by chance, but stranger things have been known to happen, so it may be that these are circulating. Again, the thing is that the more you, the more that you test, the more that you sequence, the more of these variants that you're going to find from a clinical perspective, these look like COVID. The virus itself, while it may be more transmissible, does not necessarily appear to be more virulent is still, does not affect the efficacy of the vaccine as the spike protein, which is what our immunity is based on, has not been significantly changed by these variant viruses. Want to move on and talk about vaccinations in Pitt County. Again, I want to stress that vaccine supply remains very limited. Vaccine supply is inadequate to meet vaccine demand at this time. Briefly show you the state prioritization. There are five groups under the state simplified prioritization. Healthcare workers and long-term care staff and residents are group one. We have been actively vaccinating this group. Older adults, meaning those sixty-five and older, I know that doesn't apply to anybody on the call tonight, but older adults are being vaccinated at this time. Last week, the governor announced that, beginning on the twenty-fourth, which is a week from Wednesday, that school teachers, school faculty, and childcare workers would be eligible as part of the move into frontline essential workers. So that is coming in the very near future. I'll have some more comments on that as we move through. The fourth group are adults of high risk for exposure or increased risk for severe illness. So those are individuals with underlying medical conditions that make them riskier. And the final group would be everyone else that has not been eligible for vaccination up to that point. In the county, vaccine is available through the following entities, the Pitt County Health Department, through Viden Health, the joint Viden/Pitt County site at the Greenville Convention Center, ECU physicians, which is currently being supplied by Viden Health to do some of the faculty and some of their patients. And last week, the Walgreens Pharmacy Program went live in Pitt County. This covered all of the Pitt County sites except the one oh three Greenville Boulevard site, which was felt to be close enough to other sites that they did not operationalize at that site. These sites were given very limited supplies, one hundred doses per site, and they were required to be scheduled through the Walgreens Pharmacy website for the locations in Pitt County. Opening eligibility to childcare providers and school faculty and staffs dramatically increase vaccine supply without a corresponding increase in vaccine supply. Pitt County Schools has at least twenty-three hundred individuals requesting vaccine. Dr. Lanker and I have been talking about this for several months now in terms of how we would work through these individuals. There are also over one hundred private childcare providers and private schools in Pitt County, and their staff and faculty will be seeking vaccination as well. We are working to provide multiple pathways to receive vaccine. The Health Department, we have clinics onsite and offsite. We have our mobile vaccine teams, which include our partnership with Pitt County Emergency Management to vaccinate first responders and our joint project with ECU to vaccinate long-term care facilities and their staff. We've also provided vaccine to the City of Greenville Employee Clinic to give boosters to the Greenville Fire Rescue EMS staff. This has helped decompress some of our in-house clinics. We've had some discussions with other employer occupational health programs pending eligibility of those employees and vaccine availability. All of our efforts are currently constrained by vaccine supply. As of this week, our baseline allotment is two hundred doses. These are unrestricted doses. They can be given to anyone who meets, the eligibility is defined by the state. We are receiving six hundred doses for what are called historically marginalized populations, generally populations of color, but also those who are socially economically disadvantaged, so low-income individuals, again, in the defined groups is eligible. The county, because of the county demographics, has also received three hundred doses of what is called an equity bump, again, to help with elderly and historically marginalized populations. Again, I stress, we have not received a dedicated allotment for childcare workers or faculty, school faculty and staff at this time. This week's activities at the Health Departments, we have our daily clinics, again, giving boosters to healthcare workers, first responders, and vaccinating historically marginalized individuals at our clinic. We will be having a special clinic for historically marginalized populations later this week that includes a five-hour block that's dedicated for Hispanic and Latinx individuals. And we have two booster clinics for the sixty-five and overage group we will hold for to give boosters to the groups that we vaccinated in the first round of that group about four weeks ago now. Those will be done at the Ag Center later this week. Want to show you the state vaccine dashboard, and I know Mr. Floyd Huggins expressed some interest in vaccine from an equity issue, so allow me to switch screens here. And I want to share my screen again, and we'll bring up the state dashboard. And let's see, that may take a second to go live. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yep. So if you look at the first line, first doses, these are allowed by the federal government, receive, total doses administered. You say, well, a hundred and two percent, how can you give more than you receive? And the receipt number is based on the published vial volume. So with Pfizer, the Pfizer vials come five to a vial, but vast majority of Pfizer vials have a six dose in them, so there's an overfill with the Pfizer vials. So from most Pfizer vials, you're able to get six doses instead of five. With the Moderna, we're finding between a third and fifty percent. A third to half of those vials have an eleventh dose. Those are packaged as ten per vial. So where we can get an extra dose out of a vial of vaccine, we get an extra dose out of there. If you can clearly draw up an eleventh dose out of the Moderna or a sixth dose out of the Pfizer, the state has said, go ahead and do that, and you can administer that. What we are not allowed to do is combine residue or residual vaccine from vials to create an extra dose. But any of these, many of these vials do contain an extra dose. The long-term care program, this is the federal program dedicated to the nursing homes, residents. Twenty out of the sixty, twenty-one out of the sixty-one facilities in Pitt County are involved in this program. And again, this is a little bit, there it goes. I've moved it to pop back up live again. Sorry about that. You can see in this one, they're a little bit lower in percentage administered. I suspect that some of that has to do with the consent issue. We are finding that, and the folks that we're responsible to vaccinate, that getting consent from the guardians of some of these individuals in long-term care facilities is more tedious than we would have hoped. This graph shows weekly vaccinations. And then if we move down, this gives a breakdown by age and by race. So these are the state numbers, and then I'll pull up the Pitt County numbers for you. When we look at this, you can see that there are some folks less than sixty-five. These are our youngest healthcare workers in this eighteen to twenty-four-year-old group and younger first responders, same in the other groups. Most of the vaccines given across the state have been in the sixty-five to seventy-four-year-old group and the seventy-five plus group. These, when we look at this, these are overwhelmingly going to white individuals. But remember that minority individuals generally are underrepresented in the older population, so this may not be as bad as it looks at first blush. So seventy-eight percent of vaccines have gone to white, about fourteen point five to African-Americans, about two point four-five to Asian or Pacific Islands. There's a little less than one percent to Native Americans. When we look at it on ethnicity, about two point three-seven percent Hispanic and then ninety-seven percent non-Hispanic. If we look at the whole state map, you see Pitt County is one of the darker counties. It's good to be a darker county from the vaccine administration standpoint. In Pitt County, at this point, we've given thirty-two thousand three hundred nineteen doses total. Twenty-three thousand four hundred fifty-four of those were first doses. Eight thousand eight hundred sixty-five of those are booster doses, so that's eight hundred eighty-five, eight thousand eight hundred sixty-five individuals who have now completed their series. So we have vaccinated about thirteen percent, just under thirteen percent of our population in the county has received its first dose, and just under five percent has received its booster dose at this point. Let me go back up here, and we'll look at the age and racial data by Pitt County. If I scroll down to fit in the dashboard, it'll take a second to repopulate. And in the county, we're doing better with our African-American community across the county. We've done about twenty-three point seven percent. In the Health Department data, when we pull our data out of the COVID Vaccine Management System or CBMS, we are a little over twenty-five percent African-American at the Health Department. Our Hispanic or Latinx community is about two and a quarter percent in the county. Again, we're maybe just a little bit better than that in our dataset for the Health Department itself. As a percentage of the population as a whole, we think Hispanics are somewhere between six and twelve percent in the county. African-Americans represent about thirty or thirty-one percent in the county, so underrepresented, but not as bad as we might have thought at first here in the county. We look at the age distribution. Again, most of this is gone. Most of the vaccines gone to sixty-five and older. The seventy-five and older are tied with our working age folks, our younger working age folks, twenty-five to forty-nine. Some of our very young folks have received that small percentage in the eighteen to twenty-four-year-old age group. So it's spread across that with, but shifted towards the elderly. And interestingly, females outnumber males considerably in the vaccine data in Pitt County. And again, here's our county numbers again by percentage. About thirteen percent of the county has now received its first dose of vaccine. So about 13% of the county has now received its first dose of vaccine. That's, that concludes my report. I'm happy to, to take your questions, uh, at this time.
Perkins Williams, Commissioner Perkins Williams, I see your hand.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Dr. Seminell. Um, it's a, a good report. And it's good to see that the number is heading in the right direction for Pitt County and all around and for the state. Uh, my question has to do with testing. Are you still doing testing?
Uh, as the health department, ma'am?
Yeah.
Um, occasionally, at this point, most of our activity is focused on vaccination work. So we are not having any regular testing. I will tell you. I will tell you across the county on a week-to-week basis. Um, since sometime in November, we have been north of 6,000 tests per week. And many weeks, we are north of 8,000 tests per weeks across all providers in the county. Uh, we are still doing, uh, some, um, testing on a, on a occasional basis now for contact investigation and tracing. But most of our efforts are focused on vaccination.
Well, my question has to do with testing, even though you get the, the shot. It, it, uh, it gives you a better way of fighting, uh, even though you take the first and the second one. My, my question has to do with, um, you still may come in contact with the shot. I mean, with, uh, the, the, the COVID. And, uh, if you don't know, and you don't know how your body is going to react to having been vaccinated. Uh, and you may want a shot. Is there a place where you can get a shot in Pitt County?
Get a, a vaccination?
No, I'm sorry. Yes, I used the wrong word. I'm sorry.
Yeah, testing, testing is available broadly through the county. The Biden test site is still operating at least Monday through Friday. And I think they do some Saturdays. Um, all of the urgent cares in the town and the county are doing testing. Uh, CVS is doing testing, uh, as well as many of the private medical practices, physicians east. ECU physicians all still have their testing sites up and running. So, so yes, ma'am, there's testing broadly available through the county.
Do you have, do you have to make a, a, an appointment for the test?
Um, no, the Biden is first come, first served. Uh, with the other medical offices, generally you would need to, to call ahead and make an appointment.
Okay, now with Biden is first come, first served. Where is that? Is that going to be on Arlington?
That is in the, uh, parking lots across from the former Wellness Center on Wellness Drive. So it's off of Stanton'sburg Road.
Oh, I don't even know where that is. Because, um, I do know that, uh, individual may want to take a, a test or they may feel like, uh, they've come in contact. Someone called them up and say, I've got COVID. What shall I do? Uh, so if they call me and say, I have COVID, what shall I do? I've had all the tests. I mean, I've had my, um, vaccine. Someone called, I'm, I'm using a hypothetical situation. I find it's best to use myself. I've had my vaccine, my vacs, my shots. Now that's the fact. But then someone calls me up and said, Mary, I've learned that I have COVID. Or I have COVID pneumonia. What is your advice to me?
Um, so if you're fully vaccinated.
Yep.
Right now, CDC would say that you don't need to quarantine, even if you're exposed. That you should observe yourself for symptoms. And if you develop anything that, you know, is symptom consistent with COVID, then you should, um, isolate yourself. So as not to expose other individuals and then get yourself tested.
Now, where is the, tell me where the testing site is. I finally got to the testing site.
Well, the testing would be, uh, is available again through the, the Biden open testing site. That's the drive-through testing on Wellness Boulevard, which is, uh, off of Stanton'sburg, just to the west of the hospital campus.
Is it easy to find?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, that's what I want to know. And you brought up the situation with booster. To some people who are seniors such as I am. A booster mean you've had all of your vaccination and the booster goes on. You're giving out boosters now or is the booster for other things like, um, this rubella and small, uh, uh, and measles? And all the normal stuff. What's your booster is for nowadays?
Yeah, no, the, the two series, the two vaccines that we have available in the community now. The Pfizer and the Moderna both are a two-shot series. So there's the primary vaccination with the Pfizer. Then there's a second dose, which is given at 21 days or after. So that's considered a booster dose. And the same thing with the Moderna, uh, that's given at, you know, the day you get it. And then four weeks, 28 days or more later, there's a second dose given, which is considered a booster. And, and the vaccine, the dose is identical from dose one to dose two. Uh, it's only different on paper. Uh, so you, you get exactly the same thing for the first dose and the second dose, but we consider the second dose a booster.
All right. I, I wanted that clarification because I just know somebody is going to ask me about it. But, uh, and, and then I've had myself and I wanted to know, cause I've had the second dose. And I call it a second dose and they didn't call it a booster. So I didn't know whether I had to take another one, cause the people are talking about getting a booster. So, um, now I'm going to talk about this mutation one. You, you, you just knew I was going to ask some questions about, uh, the health. Because, um, I'm very tuned into that. There are a lot of respiratory problems in my personal family. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, setting that I want to ask about is the mutation. Was those, uh, that new strand of the African vaccine? Is it, was it in a heavy populated area or an open area like out in the rural?
Um, I'm not sure exactly where the residence is. It is in the southern part of the county. Um, and it, it's a household, um, I don't want to give too much away, cause I don't want to identify the individual.
I don't want to identify, but I just want to know if it was heavy populated. That's why I asked the, in general, like a heavy populated area or a highly populated area. Maybe I should say it like that.
I guess what I would say is it was probably more of a suburban area. How's that?
I don't know. Uh, well.
It's not, it's not the city, but it's also not the country.
Okay, all right. All right, that might be better. Thank you very much. And, and, and some people are not as health related, you know, as you are. That's why I'm asking these questions so that the general, uh, uneducated and rural and not that specific field will get a better idea as to what we're facing with the pandemic. And that, that's why I want to bring it up. Now, the next thing, um, deputies. Uh, I consider them a, that, I'm telling you, I consider them a, uh, a first, first, first line. Because if something go on over there across the street or I get concerned about something going on and I want to call a deputy. I want them to not hesitate and I want them to get to the, get to the site and I want them to decide it. Cause, um, everybody's scared nowadays. And so, uh, uh, I'm, I'm with them. So, uh, when are we going to do our deputies? Are, are they done and where do they fall in this?
The deputies are considered essential workers, so they are part of group three. Um, what we have done, what Sheriff Dance has done is those that have worked vaccine sites have been provided with the vaccine. So she has tried to rotate her deputies through the Biden site to get as many of them vaccinated as, as part of the vaccine team. Uh, there at the, at the, uh, well, the, the joint site, the, uh, the convention center site. Uh, those individuals who have worked some of our clinics have been vaccinated by us as well. We've done that quietly, uh, because they are technically, they're not eligible. But because they're working a vaccine clinic, they become eligible. So, um, we have, uh, tried to follow the state guidance on this and, um, uh, vaccinated in appropriate order per the state guidance. But we're allowed, we've vac, have vaccinated deputies, um, as part of our vaccine team.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Souvenir. And I know I asked you a thousand questions. Can I be a carrier even though I've had a vaccine, uh, vaccinated? Well, I've been shot. I've been vaccinated. Give me the right word.
Well, I hope you've been vaccinated and not shot. We think no, um, the jury's still out on that with, with most. When you, when you look at some of the CDC information on this, they'll say, well, you don't need to quarantine, but that's only for three months. And that's because the data right now that they have shows antibodies out to three months. We know in other studies, looking at folks who've had natural disease, who've actually had COVID, that about 88% of folks have antibodies at six months, uh, was published in a recent study. With most vaccines, the antibodies persist for, you know, two to five years. Once you've completed that primary course, many times longer and for some series, perhaps even lifelong. So, um, we're not sure. Some of that has to do with whether you're re-exposed or not. Because when you're re-exposed to the infection, it sort of serves as a natural booster, uh, to your immunity. So we don't think that a fully vaccinated individual can spread the disease, um, but we just don't know for certain yet.
Okay, that's very good. And thank you very much. I, I don't think that's me with that other sound voice, but thank you very much for that information. Because, uh, like I said, we do have a lot of respiratory problem and asthma is very serious. I've lost four or five immediate family members with asthma. And, um, I, I, I listen, I've got so with this pandemic, I listen to my body very carefully. And sinus is really a serious thing with me. So, uh, the pandemic sort of act like a, some of the sinus symptoms with headaches and nose wound and drainage and all like that. So I have to stay tuned. I appreciate it. And I appreciate everyone in the audience and on the board, listening to my drill and the Dr. Souvenir. I appreciate your kindness and your patience.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're welcome.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Albright, you have a question?
Yes, a couple, a couple here. Thank you, uh, and thank you again, Dr. Seward, Sewardell for, uh, the report and the good news and for all the hard work from your staff. It looks to me, if I'm reading your slides right, that, um, and you say that the issue still seems to be availability. That the state is getting everything that the federal government has promised the state. And that the county is getting everything that we've been counted, uh, promised by, uh, the state. So it looks like when we're following the news and hope, and our hopes are, we're trying to get our hopes up. We're hoping that the, the federal, uh, will ramp up the distribution, um, a lot soon. Am I reading that right?
Yes, sir. The, the state is actually receiving a little bit of a bump in their allocation. Uh, they've gone up about 5% in what the federal government is giving the state. And I think that's where some of our, the equity bump to counties has come from, uh, across the state. And she's given us a little extra, um, but still far less than we really need to vaccinate everybody.
Right. But the other thing is just a clarification. You showed a slide that said current allotments and it was 200 doses, 600 targeted and 300 a bonus. What is the timeframe that you're talking about with the, uh, the allotment? When you say current allotment, what are you talking, what do you mean?
That's per week, Commissioner.
Okay, so that's what we're getting per week and that's been, uh, consistent as this has gone on. And we don't know when we're going to get that current allotment raised. Is that, is that an accurate assessment?
Yes, that's true. Um, we, we get that allotment, um, generally comes on a Wednesday or a Thursday, which kind of drives our vaccine clinics later into the week. At least the first doses need to be out the door, uh, by Monday. Uh, so they have to be in CVS by, CVMS by the close of business on Monday is what the state has, has asked us to do. Uh, because it's a push to get the first doses out. The boosters are not as critical because the booster interval, uh, can be spread out some. We understand that not everybody will come exactly at four weeks for their booster. Uh, so they're a little bit more lenient with that, but the first doses, they really want out. Uh, it's a, I think in excess of 90% out the door by the following Monday. And close to exhausting your supply by the following Monday.
Well, it looks like you're using up your supply too. And I, I, I think that that's going, looks like that's going well. And so we'll, uh, for more vaccines sooner. Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Seminell. I have just a question. Um, how do you tell, what are the signs of the variants? You know, African-American, I mean, a South African variant.
Um, clinically, the, the variants are indistinguishable from what we would consider normal COVID or un- unvariant COVID, un- unmutated COVID. Um, when they do the analysis, what they're actually doing is taking that long, um, piece of RNA, the, the genes of the virus. And they're actually sequencing it. And they're finding differences in the sequence of the genetic material of the virus. Uh, but clinically, the syndrome produced by the UK variant, the South American variant. Uh, there's even a Brazilian variant out there are indistinguishable from what we would consider the primary COVID. Uh, that came out of Wuhan, the, uh, the original strain that came out of Wuhan. Um, so the, and, and vaccine efficacy right now is believed to not be affected. At least for the Pfizer and Moderna, which focus on the spike protein, uh, as the spike protein, which is a protein in the surface of the virus, uh, to which we make our antibodies, has not been significantly changed by these variants.
So a person would not know whether or not he has, uh, a variance or irregular COVID?
No, ma'am. No, it's similar to influenza where if you had H1N1, you wouldn't know clinically the difference between H1N1 and say an H3N2 virus, a more traditional flu virus. Um, the clinical presentation is very similar.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. And, uh, you've introduced a new word to us, I believe, COVID smart. So you want us to be COVID smart, ma'am?
Yep. Yes, ma'am. If you can be COVID smart, please be COVID smart.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I see no other hands. So thank you, Dr. Seminell, for your report.
You're welcome. Thank you all for your attention.
Okay. So we'll move to the second one, I believe, and this. We need a motion to, to, uh, accept Dr. Seminell's report.
Oh, no, ma'am. No motions needed.
Okay, all right. We'll move to the next item under the report, Mrs. On the item, sir, report.
Yes, you have the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award, that's Government Finance Officers Association, and Brian Barnett, if you will take that.
Sure thing. Um, here's a bit of good news during the pandemic. Um, the county was just recently notified by the Government Finance Officers Association, um, for our 2020, 21 budget, which is the current year budget that we, that we are in, um, that we have received. The, uh, association's distinguished budget presentation award. Uh, this is the highest form of award for a local government, um, in the entire United States. Um, this is our 24th consecutive year of receiving this award. Uh, in order to receive the award, the county has to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. Um, that assesses how well the budget is served as a policy document, a financial plan, an operation guide and a communication device. Uh, the document must be rated as proficient in all four categories to receive the award. Um, it is valid for one year. Um, and we continue to improve the budget presentation to keep pace with increased, uh, requirements for the program. Uh, each year they do add on one or two new items and, and we have to meet those requirements in order to keep, uh, receiving the awards. So I'm happy to, um, present to you today the fact that we have received this for the 24th consecutive year.
Well, we're happy to receive it. We're happy to hear that we are receiving it for the, the, uh, 24th consecutive. And that's, that's good, consecutive. That means we have not missed a year. Thank you, um, Brian. Uh, so we're going to move to the third one. Brian, you up again?
Yes, uh, you all should have in front of you, um, should have received a copy of our monthly financial report for the general fund, the solid waste fund and the EMS fund, uh, at the end of January 31st. Uh, this is our seventh month of the fiscal year. Uh, we are 58.33% of the way through the year. On the general fund side, we have collected 71.1% of anticipated revenues and we have spent 54.1% of our budget. Um, as I've stated in the past, we are doing better at this point this year. Um, primarily due to the fact of the Warren Farm property that we purchased last fiscal years. And our revenues on the general fund sides continue to exceed expectations, uh, for what we thought we would be at this point during a pandemic. On the solid waste fund, we have collected 76.16% of revenues and only spent 49.8%. And on the EMS side, we have collected 81.49% and we have spent 61.46% of our budget. If you all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions, uh, Brian? Seeing no hands? Okay. Um.
Madam Chairwoman, you hand up.
Uh, Commissioner Nunn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move that we, uh, uh, we accept staff's recommendation to approve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move that we accept staff's recommendation to approve the monthly financial report.
I have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, so move the second that we accept the financial report coming from staff. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now move to the fourth item, which is the tax collection report from Sam Kroom.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners and Manager Elliot. It's good to be with y'all tonight. Tonight I bring you the January twenty-twenty-one tax collection report. Pitt County fiscal year to date, July one through January thirty-first. Combined collection rate for real and personal property is ninety-five point six-eight percent. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was ninety-four point five-nine percent. Just to let you know, Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. It is my recommendation for the Commissioners to approve the January twenty-twenty-one tax collection report as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kroom. Commissioner Nunnely, I entertain a motion to approve it. Commissioner Nunnely?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some move.
Madam Chairman, I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the tax collection report coming from Sam Kroom. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now here to manage this report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just a few things to report on. Next meeting dates will be March first and fifteenth, both meetings at six P M. Reminder on the NACA Legislative Conference coming up in the month of March, various dates between the eighth and the twenty-sixth. Item C is a follow-up from your last meeting on February first, where you dealt with the issue of the donation and relocation of Confederate monument. We had advertised to bring back a resolution on this meeting for February fifteenth to have that monument donated and relocated to a piece of property in Southern State County on NC forty-three South. The donation would be going to the Sons of the Confederate Veterans, which was a state organization. But we've found that we're having to back up and pen on this a little bit. The state organization is reluctant to receive the donation. However, the local organization, the Pitt County Chapter, is willing to receive it as a donation. So we're having to work with them to make sure that they have the appropriate papers with, with the state as an organization. So at this point in time, that, that project is on hold. Janice, did you want to add anything to that? Clarify anything I just said?
No, I think you've covered it. On February fourth of this month, I had a conversation with Kevin Stone, the commander of the State Division, and he indicated that the state was not willing to accept it. So we're continuing to work with the local camp to see if we can't move that forward. This will still come back to the board for further action before anything is final.
And Madam Chairwoman, just one last item. I was asked to give an update, kind of broad brush update on broadband itself. As you're aware, broadband is a topic, is the, one of the board of county commissioners legislative priorities. It's the number one legislative party of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. But as we've talked to you as board commissioners the past a few times, there's another number of moving pieces and parts to broadband, especially as it applies to Pitt County itself for unserved and underserved areas. Some of these pieces are grant awards by the North Carolina Supplemental Great Grants, federal pieces such as the USDA grant program dealing with broadband spectrum per se. And even then, the, through the FCC, the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. None of these pieces have necessarily gelled themselves together yet where we can go back to you with a definitive report or recommendation. But do want you to know that these are, pieces are still moving around, moving forward, backwards and forwards, kind of at the same time. But we hope in the near future to bring back a more formal report with some positive news.
And as you said, it is one of the priorities with the Association of County Commissioners. One of the top priorities.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, then move to items for consent. I entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved in seconds that the consent items be approved as granted. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move to items for discussion. We have the Suddenlink community forum follow-up. I believe at our last meeting, we had much discussion on that coming from led by Commissioner White. And I believe I asked her at the last meeting to have her forum in her district and invite Suddenlink and give these citizens a chance to force their complaints. Scott, do you have anything you want to say before I ask Commissioner White?
No, I don't want to steal Commissioner White's thunder on this. Other than the forum was held on Monday, February the eighth. Myself, the county attorney, Commissioner White, Commissioner Coulson, Commissioner Perkins Williams, and then several citizens from Pitt County attended the forum. And with that, I would defer to Commissioner White again. I don't want to steal any for, um, follow-up on this.
Okay, Commissioner White?
Thank you, Chairwoman, and thank you, Scott. Like you said, we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting. And since the last meeting, we've had the town hall on Suddenlink where our citizens called in. I've also gotten some emails, messages and Facebook comments. So like I said, we discussed it last time. And with that being said, I would like to make a motion to send a letter to the Attorney General regarding Suddenlink.
Commissioner Coulson, I believe I saw your hand first.
I'd like to second that motion.
Commissioner Nunnely, I see your hand. Do you have a question? I'll comment.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. I wanted to, you know, since we're discussing the matter, I wanted to know if, I think everyone agrees that we want to make sure that our constituents are, are being heard. And I wondered if, just kind of as a brainstorm, if, if Commissioner White and the other commissioners and perhaps our legal counsel could maybe weigh on, maybe, maybe, maybe we go about this in a way where we're not singling out a, a single provider, but we, maybe we build into our communication network with, with the state. If we have a procedure whereby a, an end consumer of an internet provider, and it looks like we're going to have some more here in Pitt County. There, there will always be ongoing concerns with customer service and service, et cetera. But if we, if we had a, a catch-all, that if there was a complaint that an end consumer filed an appropriate complaint with the state, whatever bodies in charge of oversight of that franchise. And if, if that complaint did in fact include a valid legal basis for the claim and it was sworn to appropriately, and there was not action taken by the state and not appropriate remedy by, by, by the internet provider that, that we would then, on behalf of that constituent, as, as a commissioner, as as a staff, assist with, with following up and assisting that constituent with, with working with the state to make sure that's remedied. So we're not taking an approach directly at one company, but we're really taking a holistic approach and making sure that consumers are taking the correct avenue, but really acting as a support, if that's something that might be considered.
Okay, you've heard Commissioner Nunnely. Any comments, questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to request that the letter be written and composed and then brought back to us to see before it's sent.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor already, Commissioner Ward.
I'm just, I'm just suggesting that to the maker of the motion.
I do, okay.
I mean, because there's the motion, could we have the motion repeated?
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is to send a letter to the Attorney General in regard to Suddenlink issues.
Okay, that's what I would like to ask at our next meeting, that, that letter be included in our packet and brought forward to us before we agree to send it. And I mean, I feel, I hope that she'll be, that she'll be willing to write that for us and maybe work with the attorney or whatever.
Well, Commissioner Nunnely, do you have another? I mean, go ahead and still up.
Well, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll formalize my motion and, and request that as a substitute motion, that we work with staff to develop a holistic approach to, to support constituents that are not being responded to by state or broadband internet providers.
Okay, so that is your substitute motion. And with the substitute motion is voted on first, I believe. Is that right, Madam? Does it need a second?
You'll need a second to the substitute motion. And then if you could restate it, please.
All right, I'll second the motion.
All right. Commissioner Perkins Williams, you have a hand, you have your hands up? Or were you second, going to second?
No, I wasn't going to second it. I, I thought we could just deal with the first motion and then we can make a second one to include because I've gotten criticism from Centerlink as well as Suddenlink. So I, I thought we would deal with the first one. If, if you can include it with providers, period, and just not send her out. I mean, because well, I, I will cast my vote. I, I mean, you know, I just, because Centerlink is just a bear.
The, we're getting into something else. We have a motion on the floor and
Read the motion, please.
The substitute motion is going to be voted on first.
Madam Chairwoman, you have a hand up. The Commissioner Coulson, I don't know if that was a previous hand or?
Is that a, Commissioner Coulson, is that a previous hand or?
No, what I wanted to say is that the thing started because there's predominance of complaints from Suddenlink users. I get, I, I'm surprised if other commissioners don't get a lot of complaints about it. And I personally have had a lot of issues with them. I can't speak with Centerlink, other than the fact that that was brought up in the, uh, the town hall the other day by one of the people. But, but the thing is, is I think it kind of waters it down. The fact is, we're just weighing into this and telling Josh Stein that, that, you know, we as a county board commissioners see this as a problem as, as well as many other states, and not states, but counties and, and cities. And we even got in our packet a couple of weeks ago, one of the letters that went into an explanation from, you know, what was going, what, you know, he, he was actually seeing from all these other communities. And we weren't listed because we hadn't weighed in yet. So while I understand what, what the substitute motion supposed to cover, I still think it, it misdirects away from what the original issue was, which is Suddenlink. Anyway, that, that's all I got to say about it.
Well, I, I think when, I don't think we should be singling out, but, and anyway, I'm going to call for the vote on the substitute motion.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins, can I ask Commissioner Nunnely to repeat his motion?
Yes, please. Commissioner Nunnely, will you repeat your motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is a motion to request that the commissioners and staff worked together to develop a procedure whereby there, that constituents that, that, that file complaints with the appropriate body involving internet providers, that they've gone through that appropriate avenue, they've, they've sworn statements of fact that attest and present a reasonable legal problem with consumer laws, consumer protection laws. And then there's not been an appropriate response by the state and a remediation from that internet provider that we, that we have, we have a system in place whereby we can support and bolster that constituent's complaint and, and really start to, to bring it to the next level. And all in an effort to really do it in a way that we're not singling out a provider, but making sure that we're also being strong behind our constituents.
Okay, so we will come up with a procedure.
Yes.
If I can just make a brief comment. I, I don't want to promise too much to the citizens based upon the fact we don't have franchise authority for but one idea might be on our, the county's website would be to post a link. If you're having broadband or internet problems, cable problems with any provider, that you would, we have a link to the NCDOJ, North Carolina Department of Justice, Consumer Complaint Hotline per se. It's, it's actually a, a link where you can then type in your, your complaint. And then the Department of Justice then are, is supposed to investigate. I, I, the, the complaint is lodged. I assume they, they investigate. But I don't know that we would have the opportunity then to intervene on their, each, each every complaint that is lodged through the county. That's my only concern. But that might be one idea of a holistic approach or procedure to meet that goal.
Commissioner Nunnely, do you like that? Would that be sort of what your motion would be as, as a procedure?
So I, I do think it would be good, rather than just spitballing in the meeting, to, to really hash it out with legal counsel. My main concern with singling out entities is, is legal. And, you know, what, what we're doing there. So I do, I would like to come back with it, but I think absolutely having a suggestion that it's easily accessible to constituents that they've got an internet problem, they know where to go, and we're being a portal for helping them find that, absolutely. But we also want to be supportive to constituents that go through that process and still are not, you know, still maybe something's going wrong. So we, you know, I, I think we can look at it a little bit longer, but I certainly would agree with that as a first step.
Yes. Do you have, was somebody else saying something?
Madam Chairman, I was just going to say if Commissioner Nunnely would verbalize what he just said in the form of a motion, I think that makes more sense maybe than the motion that we've got.
He did put his motion into, I mean, he did, he's made a motion to that effect. He was just explaining it a little bit more.
Okay.
In reference to what Scott said.
Okay.
All right, so we're ready to vote on Commissioner Nunnely's substitute motion. Madam Clerk, do you have it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Chairwoman?
Yes, for?
Okay, so we're ready.
Okay, so we're ready on the substitute motion, which is to request the Board of Commissioners and Staff to develop a procedure or policy um, for complaints regarding internet providers in an effort not to single out an individual provider.
Yes.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
No.
Commissioner Albright?
No.
Commissioner Coulson?
No.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes five to four.
Now we're mo- do we need to vote on the main motion, Madam?
You do not. Your substitute motion passed, so you do not go to the main motion.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to, yeah, wanted to be sure and said. All right, now we will move on to items for decision. Uh, oh, I'm, where are?
Yes ma'am, uh, public health number one.
Yeah, public health number one, okay. Um, Dr. Simmons, is it? That's what we're hearing?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
I'm not sure still on, he's, he's showing on the participants list, but I'm not sure if he's actively still participating. I'll be happy to
I'm still here, Scott. I'm not sure what the item is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was looking now.
It is, uh, public health's request for new positions for the clinical social worker one at a grade sixty-three-one. These were state funds, and this one came in to be a, um, part of the agreement addendum for the Baby Love Plus program. This is going to be a funding support hiring or contract to licensed clinical mental health providers, such as psychologists or clinical social worker to provide mental or behavioral health or enroll, to enroll participants. So in order to get the FTE headcount up, this had to come before the board. Even though it is state funding, there's no county funds involved in this, but to have an FTEO one point O, it required the board's approval, Dr. Simmons.
Um, thank you, Mr. Manager.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Um, I think it's clear, and the, um, manager just cleared it for us. There's no money involved from the county, so I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Okay. Now have a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve, um, item one, uh, the clinical social worker one grade sixty-three for thirty-five thousand nine and dollars. No kind of, no county funds needed. You ready for the question? Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The move to the second item, update price on the new, uh, compactor for transfer station, John Dimmer.
Good evening. Um, Pitt County Solvation Recycling, we received a quote from J Mac National Waste Partner Company to purchase and install the new Marathon Block Pack Transfer Station, Transfer System for the Transfer Station. This is being, um, purchased through Sourcewell, and Sourcewell serves, uh, governments and educational nonprofit order organizations for cooperative purchasing by conducting the procurement process, which meets purchasing requirements. Just allows us to purchase items like off state contract without, without going through the procurement process. Um, we had, staff had estimated what, um, we thought the installation and purchase would be um, to get ready for Brian and, um, presented to you last, um, meeting, and we were short, um, by about a hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars. We did receive a quote for the new compactor and installation, which will cost one million, two hundred forty-nine thousand and nine dollars. Like I said, it's a hundred seventy-three thousand dollars over what we estimated. Just wanted to come back to get approval, um, to go, move forward with this. The hundred seventy-three thousand dollars will come out of this year's budget. Seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars will come from what was budgeted this year to pay the loan. Brian is, uh, uh, let me know that the loan, there won't be a payment in this fiscal year. And plus, the remaining ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars will come from a hundred thousand dollar contingency line item. Would like your approval so we can move forward with this. This, uh, the remaining, most of the money is coming from the, uh, lobs, um, what we're, what the borrowing through the lobs.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dimmer? If not, I entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, excuse me, go on Melvin.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
I second it.
It's been moved in second to approve, uh, that request. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hmm, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the third item, CARES Act Transfer, and we'll have Brian up again.
Uh, thank you again, um, Madam Chairwoman. Um, this budget amendment allows the county to take the last portion of our CARES Act funding that we received over the summer. Um, the nine hundred and four thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars is for allowable expenses on the public health and public safety salaries. Um, the CARES Act allows us to use the, the funding to fund these positions. Um, this was primarily work done from the middle of October into the end of December um, in the mitigation against the coronavirus. And because the, we set up the money initially in a separate fund outside of the general fund and the public health fund, it does require board action to move the money from the CARES Act fund over to the general fund and the public health fund to pay for these, uh, allowable salaries, uh, under the CARES Act funding.
Okay. Any questions? If not, uh, entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Commissioner Nunley?
Move to, accept the recommendation, approve the budget amendment.
Okay. Uh, well, you can second it, may I, uh, move?
Second.
All right. Um, Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move now to the appointment of the Pitt County Board of Adjustment, Scott.
Yes ma'am, you have, um, there's a need for two alternates on the Pitt County Board of Adjustment, and one representative of somebody residing south of the river. You have a list of, um, people in our database who are interested, expressing interest, and just need the board's, um, action to fill those three slots.
Okay. I don't see it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Rita Jackson Gilbert and Jos- Joseph Pierce.
Those be alternates or, or the south of the river?
Aren't there two people?
Well, two, two alternates can be anywhere in the county, and then one person representing south of the river.
Okay, I know one of those is south of the river, and I don't think there was a third one. I think maybe we may have to get some more people to apply. I'm not sure we got one. We looked at that. Do you remember, Scott?
Um, I cannot remember which names when.
I know we only looked at, we only agreed on those two. And I don't think we have one.
Rita Gilbert is, um, north of the river, and Joseph Pierce is south of the river.
So you, you have, um, Mike, yeah, Mike Bridges.
The third one, yeah.
Mike Bridges.
Okay, let's add Mike Bridges to that list.
Okay.
I like to second her motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we appoint those, uh, three names.
Madam Chair, this is James. I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um, it is important to differentiate who is going to be a voting member on that board and who are the two alternates. So I think the clerk has provided, the voting member needs to be from south of the river, so maybe we should look at that voting member first and then look at the two alternates.
Okay, uh, Mike Bridges is south of the river, okay. Uh,
and Joseph Pierce.
And, and Joseph Pierce is south of the river. So those two are south of the river. Okay.
Uh, may I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mr. Rose?
Yes ma'am.
Uh, my question has to do with opportunity of learning. Uh, one is a voting member, and that must come from the south of the river, so yep, I agree with that, but will the two alternate has, have an opportunity? Uh, will you notify them the board so they can sit in and, and grow?
Absolutely. Uh, we typically hold an annual training session, and these alternate members also attend the regular meetings just in case one needs to be recused, or there's some other issue, maybe someone's absent. So yes, they're actively involved with the board.
All right. I, I certainly would like very much for Ms. Give, Rita, give, give, yeah, so give it will be the alternate. I saw her name on here. That's fine with me. Okay.
Okay, now she's north, she's north of the river.
Yes, and that's a good, uh, the training.
You just need to identify out of Joseph Pierce and Mike Bridges. Both of those are south of the river. Which one do you want to be the voting representative?
Oh, she can call that out. Joseph Pierce.
Okay. So you've got Joseph Pierce as the south of the river representative, Rita Gilbert and Mike Bridges as the two alternate members.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, you've heard that, um, I believe there's a, there was a sec, may I second it, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we're ready to vote.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes, and I'd like to ask a question, uh, it has nothing to do with, except two names on this, on this list that are not in Pitt County anymore, and that I think, uh, you should contact to remove them from the list, and that's Chanel Coleman Sellers and, uh, Rich, 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 Ri- R-I-S-O-N.
Yeah. It's been called to, uh, to, uh, staff's attention, uh, Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Thank you.
We'll move to, um, the appointment, reappointment of the Animal Service Advisory Board, Scott.
Yes ma'am, there's recommendation by the Animal Services Advisory Board to reappoint Carol Wilson as the at-large representative.
Uh, Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
I didn't take my hand down. I'm sorry. I, I need to take my hand down.
Commissioner, well, Commissioner Coulson didn't have his up, but he took his down.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, Carol Wilson be reappointed as the at-large representative on the Animal Services Advisory Board.
Okay, Commissioner Nunley?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that Carol Wilson be reappointed to the Animal Service Advisory Board. Are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now have the reappointment of Shepherd Memorial Library Board of Trustees, Scott.
Yes ma'am, it's been recommended that Tracy Stroud be reappointed to the library board.
Okay. I'd say move.
Second.
It's been moved in second that Tracy be reappointed to the Library Board of Trustees. Are you ready for the question? Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Hugg-
Yeah.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now have the, uh, reappointment of the Fire District Commission, Scott.
Yes ma'am, this is for the, um, Red Oak Fire Department. They're requesting that Chad Singleton, Danny Coward, and George Darden be reappointed to that Fire District Commission Board.
Okay. Commissioner White?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
I second.
It's been moved in second. Ready to vote, Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes, yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, appointment, reappointment to the, uh, JCPC?
Yes ma'am, so you have on this one, JCPC, remember that the JCPC Board, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, is primarily, uh, people are pointed by attribute, um, such as whether you're a juvenile justice attorney, um, defense attorney, so forth. But you have a recommendation by the JCPC to appoint Alice Keen, Marla Blake, Deion Docree, and Stacy Huss, and this will be an exception to the point of policy um, for those folks, with the exception of Stacy Huss. And they're also asking to appoint, um, Jovan Thompson to the JCPC as a new appointee.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I've been serving on that board. I certainly like to, uh, make a motion that we reappoint, uh, the said members.
And what about the new? Oh, okay, you said numbers. Okay, all right, second?
I second the hat.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we reappoint the requested names. Are we ready to vote, Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mick Lawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes, and I'd like to ask a question about this board.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to know, um, for seat number nineteen that will be up, uh, uh, 'cause I want to start looking for someone, uh, is that appropriate, Mr. Manager?
As, as, as long as the person you're, you're looking for meets the attribute of that seat.
Oh, it's got, it, it said at large, it didn't say it was a do, do anything, seat number nineteen. I know the seat num, seat six, six is up too, but seat nineteen is, is up, and I want to be looking for somebody.
Yes, I would assume as long as they're at large, then yes, well, actually, seat, well, yeah, seat nineteen is at large, um, that would be fine.
Okay.
But that particular seat is not expiring until December of this year.
Uh, what constitute a, uh, substance abuse, 'cause that, a person?
Somebody who's, I guess, actively working in the substance abuse field.
Okay.
Counselor, or somebody, you know, medically related to substance abuse.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? We move down to Commissioner comments and committee reports, um, we will, uh, start with, um, Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
What, what, what?
Yeah, and comment, closing comments.
Oh, uh, mm, all right, uh, I would like to say thank you to the people who participated in the town forum, and I also would like to remind the residents of Pitt County, this is a COVID season, uh, we have a pandemic about, but our highways and roadways and everything is getting trashy, is all fallout, please pick up the trash, keep it in your car till you get to the service station, pick up the trash in your front yard where nobody, everybody can see it, and across the road if no one is in front of your house, I have seen people picking it up, but this is important, and it is a health issue, trash is healthily bad for your body, thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
No comment.
Commissioner Albright?
No comment.
Commissioner, uh, McLawhorn?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd just like to briefly state that I want to, uh, thank you, uh, and Scott for allowing the recognition of the African-American county commission, and especially the ones that was trailblazer, uh, such as G D Garrett and Fannie Moore, uh, and Madam Chair, I'd like to also have a personal, uh, recognition for you, as being the first black female member of this board, along with the, uh, first black female chair woman of this board, it's a great recognition, and I think a lot has to be, uh, given to, uh, both you and Scott for, for this great recognition, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLawhorn, uh, Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
No comment.
Uh, Commissioner Nunley?
No comment.
Commissioner Coulson?
No comment.
Commissioner White?
I do have one comment, I would like to apologize to the citizens of Pitt County that we couldn't get enough support to send a simple letter to the appropriate people to address the concerns with suddenly, to my fellow commissioners who voted no tonight on a motion that just puts the burden back on the citizens, I want to thank you for your support.
Then I.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I like also a motion that we adjourn.
Well, I want to make sure I didn't omit anybody.
Everybody.
Okay, all right, I'll say thank you, uh, Commissioner McLawhorn, for, uh, that, for your comments in reference to the African-American, uh, recognition, so, uh, and I believe Commissioner Perkins-Williams made a motion that we adjourn, so I entertain a second.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, Madam Clerk, we ready to vote?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes, please.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, adjourn, good night.
Hallelujah.